Good morning, everyone, to the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting, July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you'd stand and join me in the pledge. Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda?
We will move the nine thirty's of Board's recognition of Karen O'Brien to August sixth at nine thirty.
Okay, thank you. Agenda will be approved with that. One change. County Clerk, oh, constituent time, is there anybody in the room that would like to address the Board? Is there anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay. Now we'll go to County Clerk, Terry Stevenson.
Good morning, Commissioners, I have the minutes for the July second, two thousand and twenty-four Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Do you have any additions, changes, or deletions?
I have none.
None here?
Thank you, that's all I have this minute.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I'll go to Commissioner Business, Delta County Treasurer Lisa Tofoya, and presenting her semi-annual report. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Rodney.
Is your mic on? Thank you.
You're welcome. I would like to present the semi-annual report for the county. This is a summary of activity from January first, two thousand and twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. We've got a starting balance of twenty-seven million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and three cents. This does differ from the December thirty-first semi-annual report. Ending balance, which was twenty-seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and three dollars and seventy cents. The difference is your line item. Fund number zero nine nine zero, which is your prepaid taxes. The difference is ninety-five thousand, nine hundred, thirty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. And those are prepaid taxes that we backdate to December thirtieth after the tax rule was accepted in January, so. That's the reason for that difference. Our ending balance is thirty million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. This does reflect a credit balance in the fund zero five, zero, excuse me, zero four five one, which is an abatement account for Hodgkins. And that balance will be absorbed once we have an actual abatement. That will absorb that five cents, it's been hanging out there for quite some time. We also have a negative balance in the cash over in short, fund zero nine forty, and that's just an account where the treasurer has a tolerance for taxes that come in that goes back and forth all year long, and we adjust it at year end. Are there any other questions regarding the semi-annual report?
And am I correct to say that that negative balance is thirty-four dollars and forty-six cents? Is that what I'm reading there?
What line item?
Uh, the last one, zero nine four zero. He said that was one account that was negative.
It's negative sixty-one dollars and forty-one cents. It's the cash over short.
Yeah. Oh, I see it now, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions?
I have none. Thank you very much for the semi-annual report, and I'm glad you like numbers, because there's a lot of them there.
So can I get an approval for publication?
Um, we accept the Delta County Treasurer's semi-annual report ending June thirtieth.
I'll step down and second that. Motion and second on the floor, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Hey, next you have the consideration of the IGA in our governmental agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the Town of Orchard City regarding patching areas of Tongue Creek Road with hot asphalt as needed. This was right on the line of the threshold for the item to come before the Board, it was right at twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two. I did indicate to Scott Cheats, Public Works Director, and Roden Bridge too, to bring this to your decision space, since it was that close. And if there was any input from the public, they would have this opportunity to do so. This would be for the Chair to sign this IGA.
You might as well see if anybody from the public can like this.
Well, the Town of Orchard City, they haven't signed it yet, they're all in agreement and notified.
They're the ones who initiated the IGA.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any input about this IGA? Anybody online? No? Okay.
Pretty rough, Roger, you're dealing with that, there's to be careful. Well, I'll move that the Board approved the IGA between the Town of Orchard City and Delta County for repairs in hot asphalt on Tongue Creek Road in the amount of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two, and authorize Chair's sign.
I'll step down and second that. Motion and second on the floor, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done. Next up are the warrants.
Consideration a Chair to sign the warrants from all of the respective funds. Fund expenditures paid by warrant numbers one five one five one one through one five one seven seven three, and ACH transaction seven six five through seven nine zero from June one, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, totaling one million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and five cents in accounts payable, and one million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, seventy-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents in monthly county human services and health department June two thousand and twenty-four payroll items for items budgeted and approved for Delta County policy, and for the Chair to sign.
So move.
Motion and, and I'll step down and second that. Uh, motion and second on the floor, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Ms. Lindsay?
We got the, uh, schedule.
Yes, I have a few of the things that we added in this morning, so it might not be um, right on the money, but we'll get it close. So today we have, um, a work session with the Grand Mesa Nordic Council at eleven AM. One PM, we have the UVWUA Path Course Meeting until three PM. And then the Board of Health Meeting from three thirty to five PM here at five sixty Dodge.
There's also Community United Delta Hospital from four thirty to six.
Are you?
I'll be attending that, I don't, Mike, if you're gonna go.
I can, yeah. How we're at it?
The hospital there.
Inside, yeah, okay.
Four to six. Um, the seventeenth AGNCV, um, Grand Board, uh, Credit Board Meeting. Looks like you have interviews set up at ten AM. Um, in the VNC room at five sixty Dodge. Um, and then at three thirty, there is the open house for Rogers Mesa Phase One.
Exactly. Four thirty or three thirty?
It's held on your calendars at three thirty.
Actually, four thirty, I don't want to tell people the wrong time.
And that's at Hodgkins?
Yes, that's at Hodgkins. Let me see what we have there. I think you're right, I think it is. Maybe just hold on.
It's wired. Four thirty to six thirty, that's what C-Dot's putting out.
I think you all are just doing stuff. On Thursday, the eighteenth, um, there is coffee with the Commissioner in that Polis Park in Peonya, seven AM Commissioner, uh, Wendell Coles will be providing the coffee. Come and have a conversation with him about what's going on in the North Fork Valley. That is open to all, copy is free. The week of the twenty-first. On the twenty-third, uh, we have a work session from eleven to twelve with Chuck C. We also have, um, the Garnet Mesa Solar Region Cutting, that is at one thirty to three PM. The twenty-fifth, we have, um, at eight AM, the Board's Decision for the VOE Hearing. And then there is a Region Ten that day at eleven thirty. Friday, the twenty-sixth, is the Commissioners' Community Barbecue at the Fair, that is from six to eight. That is free to all Delta County community members. It is a free hamburger dinner. We have live music, eating the Giants is our performer this year. There will be a Kid Zone and a Beer Garden. We're very excited about this. Again, that is Friday, the twenty-sixth, six to eight, yeah. The week of the twenty-eighth. And I'm sorry, I did miss, um, because I didn't make it know about um, on the eighteenth, there is an Altrusa barbecue dinner. Um, and Mike, did you want to speak a little bit about?
Yeah, I'll just start at five o'clock, it's here in Delta at Cleveland Park. They usually have a good feed out there, and Altrusa does a lot of good things for the community estate and nationwide and helping people, and it's a good event, and that'll be on the eighteenth at five o'clock at Cleveland Park.
And then on, going into August, August sixth, we'll have the next, uh, Delta County Board of Reverend's regular meeting, the first Tuesday of month. Um, there's also um, the Republican meeting in six to eight that day. And that takes us to about mid-August. Anything of importance that I missed? You'd like to speak about?
I'm good.
We do on August fifteenth have the, um, Playground Groundbreaking Event at three thirty. Um, that is at the Delta County Fairgrounds, um, and I will, we'll see more information as we get closer to that event, but you will see, um, more communication surrounding that event, what's going to be happening that day, so watch out for that.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's, uh, good for the Commissioner Business, nine o'clock. It's Human Services with their updates, Annie Gallegos and her team, so we will recess and jail report. Okay, Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, Delta County Detention Facility Population Count Report, male inmates county jail twenty-nine, female inmates county jail six, male inmates Department of Corrections six, for a total of forty-one. Average daily inmate population for the week of seven one twenty-four through seven eight twenty-four was forty-eight point eighty-six. And now we will, uh, recess until nine o'clock for Human Services. Okay, welcome back, it's nine o'clock, and we have Human Services, Annie Gallegos and her crew, we'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, everyone, um, we will start with the financials and Nicole's report.
So I have two reports, I have the payables report, and I also have a, um, allocation summary. So for the payables, there's nothing, um, it's not normal operating cost really, except for one grant, um, kind of pass-through that we have paid out, I don't know if anyone's have more about that grant?
Sure, the Housing Navigation Grant, uh, we did complete this grant cycle with Hilltop. Um, they were able to sustain a full-time position, we just submitted the final report to the state, and so once we get that back as confirmed, we'll be able to report out on all the progress remade. Uh, there was a significant amount of families and individuals that we were able to either find housing for or keep them in housing. One of the biggest improvements we found was the negotiation with landlords. Uh, they were able to make a lot of headway, um, and advocate for families, uh, within those landlord discussions where those disputes can, can occur, so. Uh, we'll have a full report on that one, but the grant was paid out at the end of this last month.
How much was that grant?
One, oh, one hundred and fifteen thousand.
Thank you.
Any questions regarding payables?
I have none.
We'll make sure. No problem. Uh, so budget-wise, we're, uh, expenditure is supposed to be around forty-two percent, we are thirty point eight eight. Um, Patty and I have, I think we're seeing there are cost savings now. Um, if you look at the, um, fund summary report, you'll see that largest gap we've had in a while between revenue being higher than expenditures. Are there any questions on where we are on the budget?
It says daycare chats, and what chats start?
Chats is the program, the software program that, um, supports the, uh, Colorado Child Care, um, so the CCAP. That's the, the software program that we use.
And then the last, uh, little report I just handed out is this one, where it has a list, a listing of our allocations for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year compared with the ones that have been now published on the memos coming out. Um, I did miss the negative sign on there, but, um, I have hand-wrote it in, where you'll see if they've increased or decreased. So for APS, our funding did go down, um, or for allocation, same with Colorado Works and the Child Welfare one hundred percent. Um, I have an extra one, sorry. Um, I, if you're interested in the specific memos, we, they have the calculations on how those allocations are made. Um, if you have questions regarding that, I can share those, or any might be more knowledgeable. I'm still learning, Mike, there's different calculations for every line, and within those lines, there's like three other funding equations.
Um, one of the ones, I think that's a one that we've been able to u- utilize but is discontinued was the Adult Protection, um, the Elder Justice Act Funds. Those are discontinued, we received nineteen thousand, and so we were able to use those for client costs. And as we came towards the end of the year, we still had money there, and so part of what we reached out to the state and discovered was it didn't necessarily have to be tied to a specific current client, so we were able to purchase two ramps and then some hearing aids to be able to have on hand, uh, in the office, so that, um, as that came, um, in, in future years, if it came up, we had those supplies. So we were able to do that and then clear out that fund, so we didn't have to give any of that allocated money back. That was one, um, trying to think of another one that we're looking at potentially being discontinued is the PHE funding. Right now, uh, that has been sent over, and we've used that for, uh, some counties have filled positions with that, we have primarily used it for overtime in med cases, uh, for processing. We think it's gonna go away by next year, but last year they said it may be this year, so we're just waiting to see what that will look like. Um, but we haven't used it to fund any position, but used it for, um, overtime. Which has been successful, I think, when it comes to case processing, and the staff has utilized that. There are some counties that are on mandatory overtime in eligibility, and we are not at this time. So they utilize that as needed, and, and our timeliness has remained the same. So we haven't seen an issue with that one.
Annie, is that that SCP HCA contract?
So the SCP HCA was actually the single entry point to options for long-term care. That one is gonna be, I think it's the, was it the PHE? Oh, yeah, there is the House, no? Yeah, the ARPA, the Colorado Works, um, HB twenty-two, I think, twelve fifty-nine ARPA Part, I think is what's tied into that one. And then we did, we are going to see an increase in our two forty-two staffing, which is the Child Welfare one hundred percent. So that came out of the workload study in two thousand and fifteen, and, uh, Delta was declared a one hundred percent funded, uh, for staffing purposes and for a separate allocation through that. We normally, um, have hired, you have to, it has to be just a newer position hired after two thousand and fifteen, so we had used that for two supervisors, we had u- utilized that when we hired a records manager, um, and used part of that funding, but we increased by, I think it's almost forty-five to fifty thousand, I think we're increasing in that funding, um, with this new allocation, so that will help, uh, taking away, taking that money out of the block to be able to use for staffing. And Child Welfare is fully staffed, so we really want to spend that money.
Knock on wood.
Yes. I know, I always say that, and then something will happen. Um, but those are the main ones I wanted to highlight on here, um, any questions for the, from the allocation perspective? Oh, yeah, went up, yeah, forty, oh, yes, even more than the fifty, yeah. Oh, that's great. Okay, um, next up, we have, um, uh, self-sufficiency, and Lori, we have a CCAP income guideline, uh, proposed uh, program change, and so Lori will present that.
Um, so last month we did present to you, we were thinking of trying to, or wanting to increase our federal poverty level, um, income guidelines for, um, new applicants. We're currently at a hundred and eighty-five percent FPL, and we'd like to increase it to two hundred and twenty-five percent FPL. Um, last year's allocation, we, up through May, we've only, uh, we've only spent like thirty percent of the allocation. Uh, the allocation for twenty-four twenty fiscal year, twenty-four twenty-five has actually increased about fifty, sixty thousand, something like that, so we want to utilize that as much as we can, and we did see with UPK rolling out, there were several families, uh, many families that applied for the Childcare Assistance Program that had never applied before, but ended up being over income. So we're hoping to kind of close that gap a little bit by increasing the, the, um, uh, income guidelines to the two twenty-five, allowing those families then to, to receive this.
I've never done this before, is this something that requires an action of the Board? And is there any downsides to this, what's the unintended consequences?
So the, the great part about it is allows more family to be, families to be eligible, the other piece is then we're just spending more of our allocation. And since we have only run within thirty to forty percent of expenditure, that's gone back to the state every year, and so we've just been giving that back. And at this point with UPK, it will allow families, so for example, if you're a household size of six, you, your income, um, that you normally would, your cutoff eligibility would be six thousand, two oh nine, and then now becomes seven thousand, seven, uh, seven thousand, five hundred, fifty-two, sorry, I can't read. And so it just allows for families to do that, the only downside I see is that, um, it's going to increase workload, because you're gonna have more cases to be processed and more people coming in, but in the end, um, it will ultimately serve families. Currently, we have the childcare caseload being worked by our two, um, Colorado Works case managers, and it may, um, and we've left the childcare position open and unfilled, because we didn't have the numbers to make it a full position, so that could also happen where we would be hiring than a full-time CCAP eligibility technician, so.
How do you let people know that this is available and it's changed?
So one of the things that they'll do for outreach, especially in August, is as parents are starting to enroll in UPK, um, they will see that piece there. Uh, we'll probably put something together for social media, so that they are aware for any families that were denied last year, or things like that, um, but we have let, um, the Delta Family Center, who we are closely with, for Bella with the UPK program, we've let them know that this was a path we were, um, planning on taking, uh, once the Board approved it.
We also have the ability to freeze our, um, at receiving applications, so if it looks like we're getting close to our allocation, or, you know, looking close to exceeding it, we can put a freeze on that and not accept applications until those numbers come down. Um, and we, I mean, as far as the entire state, there's fourteen counties that are at two hundred and twenty-five percent of the FPL. Seven of those, or seven other counties are above the two hundred and twenty-five percent. A majority are, are at the hundred and eighty-five percent, which is where we were at, but we'd like to, to join that, the upper group and move it up to the two hundred and twenty-five percent.
Thanks, Eric, would you entertain a motion here?
You betcha.
I move Delta County, uh, Human Services approves the federal poverty level change for the Colorado Childcare Assistance Program to two hundred and twenty-five percent of the federal poverty level effective August first, two thousand and twenty-four. An authorized Chair sign.
I'll step down and second that. There's a motion and second on the floor, any further conversation, discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done.
Thank you.
That's a good move for our citizens. Particularly in this age of inflation.
Increase a hundred and twenty-five thousand. They, they, we, they give us a hundred and twenty-five thousand more for next year.
Thank you for paying attention to things like that.
Lori was, was, she was on it, I think she was ready for it, knowing the allocation increase that was coming, but also with UPK, there's just been a lot that's gone on with that program, and, um, sometimes families aren't able to get fully the coverage that they need, so we've, we've heard that, and we're, this is our response. Um, next topic I'd like to bring up is child support services, so they attended their conference in June, and they again received, um, uh, plaques and congratulations for, uh, distinguished county for meeting all four of the federal measures again for two thousand and twenty-three. So we are taking them to lunch, having some cake, and doing some of those things this month, uh, to recognize them and their work, and even being understaffed for a couple of months during that time. They've been able to do that, they are fully staffed now, and, uh, continuing to meet those measures, but, um, congratulations to them, so um, I might get in contact with Lindsay again and, and be able to, to send that information out and, um, celebrate the staff.
Take a picture of that lunch and.
Can do that. Um, next topic, so I'm sorry, I apologize that Lynette Overmeyer is not here today. We had a pretty critical hearing set at nine o'clock today. Um, so she needed to attend that hearing, so I will port out for her, but. Um, the most exciting part is that today, um, from three to five, we will be um. Having our differential response kickoff meeting, so that'll be in the Rubido Room. We'll have state partners here. Uh, for just an explanation for any community members of what differential response is, how we're gonna be engaging with families differently, how we're supporting the community. And just what that will look like. Um, and so we've invited um lots of stakeholders, community members, things like that and we'll. Kind of see, we'll have some light refreshments and if you're interested in coming by, uh, they've been working really hard with trainings. In this last month to get the staff into the place to where they could start this process because there's some very strict things you have to have in place. Uh, from the state's perspective in order to provide this as a new um, a new pathway for assessments. Um, and that hopefully the goal is that we engage with families more and it becomes much more of a prevention. Piece so that we're not having to get involved with families after something more critical has happened and we've been able to intervene and um engage, provide services on the front end. That's the goal. Um, we did see a little bit of a decrease in um referrals as school coming out, so from the seventy-five in May to the sixty. In June, um, and then some of those referrals, though I think Lynette mentioned also, what happens is is that then they're a little bit more critical in nature. Because it's more, there's not, there's not eyes on those kiddos when something is happening early on and so some of those are more serious in nature. So we have some of those and unfortunately then that leads over into the county attorney's office and so we've been keeping them pretty busy. Um, and the hearing that she's at today um will be um just to, for an example, we've had. A youth that has really struggled with the ability to remain in placement and so has been in the hospital. Um, for about a month and a half and in a high intensity placement and. Today's hearing is in order for us to have approval to place him out of state, which is the first time ever in Delta County's history that we'll be placing a child out of state. Into a facility, but we have no other options, so. We have, we have, so, um, but that's the hearing today. Any questions for our telephone? Thank you. It's been an extensive search for placement, weekly meetings, email streams. Um, we have Hickbuff at the table, we have C D H S at the table, we have the Ray at the table. Um, everyone there just trying to staff and and find all options for this youth, so I, I, I think it's been a great team to support him, but really. He needs to get his needs met and a hospital setting is not getting his needs met. And for adult protection, um, we are moving forward with um posting for a uh caseworker position. Most likely, um, we will probably do that within the next couple of months. We are gonna see. A decrease a little bit in our allocation, so we got, we need to balance how we're going to code potentially maybe the administrative assistant and maybe have her move over to admin. Or different things like that in order to make sure that we stay within that allocation. But our caseloads are increasing in adult protection and so we're getting to a point where having three uh full-time positions, one potentially being a lead. Is just necessary to meet the needs of the community at this time, so. You'll see some postings for that and other than that, I think that is.
Is there something you can point to as far as the increase in adult protection needs?
So, um, so we had like the, the referrals have gone up just a little bit. Um, the ongoing cases have stayed steady at about twenty-five. The issue is, is that the intensity of those cases, so several of those cases, we've had to seek out guardianships and seek out family members to do that. Working um with the county attorney's office, it's not something that the county can take on or should take on and we got out of that business a long time ago and that. We should even be like the last resort according to state for guardianships, but when you're trying to locate those, it's difficult to find family. And it's difficult to potentially even find an entity because even an entity, the court wants a name of a specific person. So for example, the Joseph Center, who does do some guardianships, you have to name an individual. And somebody working for the Joseph Center doesn't always say that's something I'm comfortable with, so. Uh, we use uh Cheryl Oltenbrun's a lot. She, we have referred many guardianships to her. But what happens is those cases then continue to have high intense needs and so they last longer. And so that's a piece of it that um when you're having to make much more weekly and daily decisions for individuals, that makes it more intense, so.
Thank you. I have nothing else and thank you very much for your work and. All that you do and in the stressful situations, thank you very much and I know the people that you serve, they appreciate it too.
Yeah, thank you for your support on the um C cap allocation. We're excited for that and we will hope to see you this afternoon if you have time from three to five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, I did hear that and I actually have worked um with her replacement um quite a bit, so um I'm excited to. To work with her again.
Thank you. Next up is planning at ten o'clock, so we will recess until ten o'clock. Your mic's on. Welcome back, it's uh ten o'clock and time for planning and we will turn it over to the planning department.
So we have two items on the agenda today. Um, the first project is PLN twenty-three dash one thirty-eight J Young. This is to accept dedication for road right of way to Delta County for B Road. Um, it'll total in zero point one three acres as a public road. The property is located on the north side of B Road in Nolka. Here's the final plat, uh, you can kind of see where the road dedication is, which is down here. The very bottom where B Road is in the green, um, for a minor plant. So with that, staff recommends that your board accept dedication of road right of way. Uh, for B Road as a public road in the amount of zero point one three acres. And authorize the chair to sign the final plat. Um, that is the, my presentation for this one and Mr. Young is here.
You have anything you'd like to say, Mr. Young, or anything you'd like to say?
Do you want me to come up there?
Please do.
I can't remember if I went over this, Brittany or not, but uh, I think, please, um, before you start.
Oh, sorry.
State your name and your address, make sure that mic's on.
James Young, how do you tell if it's on?
It's on.
Okay. One eight two one three, B Road, Delta, Colorado. Uh, I can't remember if I went over this with you or not, Brittany, but. If you guys have that right of way, my water delivery system is in that right of way. So, I mean, are things just gonna continue like they are? If I ever have to dig that up, do I have to come get permission or or what, what, what's? And. So if that means if you guys do indeed widen B Road, then you guys are responsible for for moving all the utilities and everything else, correct?
Well, I don't know if we'd be moving utilities because they would have a utility easement through there and if the utilities are buried. Then they would probably just overlay over it.
You, you can do that, you can put the road over the top of utilities?
It, you know, if it's a sewer line, if it's an electrical line, a gas line, yeah, they're. Underneath the road in a lot of areas.
Okay.
But if it's overhead. You know, then they might have to move the electrical pole or something like that.
Mr. Young, is it your domestic or your irrigation water?
Irrigation, that I was wondering about. Domestic comes down through there too, but uh.
Domestic should have their existing easement.
Yeah. But I think the extra ten feet's gonna be. Maybe you guys will leave that. You'll just move the road over ten feet. I don't know if I'll cover that or not. I'd have to go measure it, go look at the pins, new pins where we put them. But the existing irrigation line is gonna be inside your right of way. So we're still all good. I mean, do I, what I'm saying is if I ever have to dig that up, do I have to come talk to you guys, tell you what I'm doing?
It would probably be a good idea, but at the same time, if the county is. Uh, widening the road, then I think we would be responsible to, you know, assist in that. Uh, you know, if it takes a culvert or a head gate, it'd probably be the Water Users Association as far as that. The head gate would be concerned and uh.
Yeah, there won't, there wouldn't be any change on the head gate. My, my delivery, underground delivery is just parallel with B Road. And it's inside the zero point one three acres that um we're talking about. But, go ahead.
You would still have an easement for irrigation, the edge there, it would just have to be moved and.
Right, on the plat, it does show utility easement.
I believe it does.
It does. So if anything needs to be moved, I'm not responsible for that, is what I'm getting at?
Well, if anything, if the irrigation system, uh. If we were moving the road and I, there's nothing in the plans that I know of, but to widen the road or anything like that. Go ahead.
Chairman, if I, if I may, and I'm just looking at this for the first time right now, this is not an uncommon situation along county roads. Where um there are existing infrastructure utilities or 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 uh, uh, in your case, uh, uh, water delivery. I think typically how engineering or planning has spoken about this is, this is an existing use. If it stays, stays basically the same, it's probably not gonna be an issue. To answer one of your earlier questions is, if you decided to build a. Put a big pump house in there and run, but significantly expand within that, I think at that point.
Right.
You would need to come and talk to the county about that, but but this existing, if you've got a pipe coming up and.
Yeah, I just thinking, I was thinking about just maintenance issues, you know, if I have to dig in there and change something.
I think that's kind of the analysis that engineering has thought about things like this, if there's an expanded use.
Okay, yeah, routine maintenance, no, that's okay, all right. I just, I just wanted to make sure and I figured I better ask, you know, if I got a question. And uh, I, that's all I have.
Mr. Young, are you com- uh, comfortable with the dedication of zero point one three acres?
Yes.
Cause as the county does, we've been doing this for several years now, cleaning up all the rights away.
Sure.
As we do this kind of work.
Yeah, and I understand that the B Road is uh, is kind of a, I can't remember the word terminology you guys use for it. Collector Road or something maybe?
Yeah.
And and uh, that goes straight to that bridge that crosses the, you know, the river there, so I can understand that, but at some point in the future, it needs to be widened a little bit. So. Anyway, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
I have no more questions.
Okay.
Well, I'll move the board, uh, except for PLN twenty-three dash one three eight J Young. We accept the dedication of right of way to Delta County for B Road at zero point one three acres as a public road. And authorize chair to sign the final plat.
I'll step down and second that. There's a motion and second before the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we're done. Thank you, sir.
Next project we have is project for PLN twenty-four dash zero two two Collins. Um, this is to accept dedication of road right of way to Delta County for Ward Creek Road and Brimstone Road. Totally in zero point eight four acres as public road. The property is located on the east side of Ward Creek Road and the north side of Brimstone Road. And Cedar Edge. Um, this one, you can only tell where the dedication is. It's all along in the green, um, it is for a minor plot. Two lots subdivision, so with that, staff recommends that your board accept dedication of road right of way to the road. Ward Creek Road and Brimstone Road as public road in the amount of zero point eight four acres. And authorize the chair to sign the final plat. And Mr. Collins is here.
Anything you'd like to say?
Uh, no, sir, uh, we're, we're ready to move on this.
Could you please state your name and your address, sir?
I'm sorry.
State your name and your address.
Okay, uh, Stephen Collins and the address is eight six zero uh Crawford Avenue. At the present time, before we get the house built on the property.
And you're good with this?
I'm, I'm sorry.
You have any issues with them?
No, none at all.
Okay.
And you recognize the dedication of zero point eight four acres?
Yes, we recognize it, yes.
That's a Commissioner Supas question we, yeah, we always ask.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you.
Okay.
I have nothing else, Commissioner.
Okay.
For project number twenty-four dash zero two two Collins, uh, I move the county. Accept the dedication of right of way to Delta County for Ward Creek Road and Brimstone Road in total of zero point eight four acres. As public roads, uh, located on the east side of Ward Creek and the north side of Brimstone. Road and Cedar Edge and authorize chair to sign the final plat.
I'll step down and second that. There's a motion and second before the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do you have the plats?
I do, yep.
Okay.
We appreciate when planning makes this clean and logical and brings forth a good staff reports the way you get them.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job. And that is all for planning. Is there anything else that needs to come before the board?
I have none.
If not, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.